I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Forest Hills Board of Education to order. Mr. Tepper, could you please call a roll?
Mrs. Bissinger.
Here.
Dr. Heiss.
Here.
Mr. Helmgarn.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Fruman.
Here. And if you'd join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have four exits, one here, two there, one at the back. Please take note of those. We have a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Bissinger.
Yes.
Dr. Heiss.
Yes.
Mr. Helmgarn.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Fruman.
Yes. And the first item of work is our pre-work session for our work session that will be held on February 8th at 8:00 a.m. here, you're all welcome. Dr. Heiss, or Dr. Jackson, if you would please.
That press, I will show the duties. I'm going to move up to the podium only so I can get a really good view of the screens. What I'd like to do first this evening is just to kind of give a little brief overview of what has recently occurred in regards to the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission, as well as the little review of our community survey highlights. So with that, as we're, Jeannie's getting this up and going. Okay. Ohio's Facilities Construction Commission's, we're going to start with the findings in that regard. The second slide here talks about the assessments and surveys, and this is a quick overview. When we talk about school facilities, this is a topic that's been in front of the board now for several years, and just going back a few years, you can see that in '04, we had a Ohio School Facilities Commission study that was done for the district, and we've used that information now for a few years. Since '04, there have been a number of different facilities needs that have been addressed, a number of different committees, I think four different committees, whether they be board committees or superintendent committees. In 2010, there was a community survey that was conducted by Fallon Research, and I'm going to talk just briefly in a couple of minutes, just maybe relate a couple of those questions to the most current survey. And then most recently, here at the end of 2013, the board directed us to take a look at having the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission, which, to come back and do a study of all our facilities, an updated study, and we have that, that we're going to talk just a little bit about this evening, as a quick review. And then, most recently, at the end of the year, we had our second community survey done by Fallon Research. So with that, we'll move on, and we'll start talking about, a little bit about OFCC just for a moment. You saw earlier that one was called the Ohio Schools Construction Commission, and now it's the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission. And quite frankly, they're primarily the same organization. The OFCC was actually formed in 2012, that actually then kind of intertwined the architects' engineers, as well as the Ohio School Facilities Commission together in one group, but it's primarily doing the same thing. So, moving on then, it says in September this year, we then talked to them about what was called taking a look at our facilities in regards to an expedited method possibly of utilizing them in regards to facilities. So, what happened in September is we had a number of professionals come to each of our buildings. We spent at least a day at each of the buildings, if not more, and we brought a team of architects and engineers and other experts. And this same team went to each of the buildings, which was very unique in that regard, rather than having lots of different people coming in, so each team got to see all of our facilities. They provided an assessment for us that we got right towards the end of the year, and I have a copy on my desk, or on my table here, which is this large white document, the white folder. And they went into quite a bit of detail in regards to those that study. Jeannie? Now, I know this is kind of small to read, but if you take a look at this, what they did is they assessed each of our facilities in 24 different categories. And just to look at a few, the heating systems, the roofing, our ventilation, air conditioning, electrical systems, plumbing and fixtures, windows, structures of foundations, structures of walls, our floors, our roofs, our general finishes, our interior lightings, security systems, emergency and egress lighting, fire alarm systems, handicapped accessibility, site conditions, sewage systems, our water supply, our exterior doors, our hazardous materials within each of the buildings, if there were any, and any life safety issues in our buildings. Loose furnishings, and that's a variety of things, but just some of the, you know, as you go into the buildings, whether you have different pieces of technology, or different types of furnitures, or in the science labs in particular, they call some of that loose furnishings. Our technology infrastructure, and then also some construction consistencies, contingencies, I'm sorry, contingencies. So the report that we got back, as I said, one for each of our nine buildings addressed those nine, or 24 different assessment categories. And the board received that, and it's been on our website now for several weeks that our community can take a look at as well. If you do happen to go to our website for the community, those reports are very large. Actually, right in the beginning, those reports is a brief, not brief, it's a couple, three pages too, but a summary of each building. Those will probably take you through the information that you need in a, you know, you really want to get into the nitty gritty. That's what this, the whole study performed. So, Jeannie? So, again, in 2004, there were some consistencies with the 2013, and the main consistency between the two studies was, in both of those studies, was that Wilson exceeded what they determined as the two-thirds guidelines for triggering recommendations for replacement rather than renovation. So, and then 2013, just to kind of update you, in 2013, over that nine-year period, or actually, yeah, nine-year period, all six of our elementary schools exceeded the two-thirds guidelines by varying degrees. Our two high schools were nearing that, and Nego had come up a few percentage points as well. So, okay. I think what's important for the two-thirds guideline, again, is it sets the replacement versus the renovation standards for our school facilities as that two-third margin. In other words, what the OFCC takes a look at is they say that if it really, it's kind of like, you know, when you take a look at anything in your own possession, whether it be something in your house, or your car, whatever, if it's going to cost you much more to, or getting close to the cost of replacement versus renovating it or fixing it, then that's what we have to take a look at. So in this case, if you'll see the six elementaries from varying degree, if we start with Air Elementary, Air was built and opened in 1973. This report came back and said that the replacement versus renovation was 75 percent. Maddox Elementary is opened in 1966. That was a 73 percent ratio. Mercer opened in 1973, a 76 percent replacement versus, renovation, excuse me, versus replacement. Sherwood, 72. Summitt Elementary, built in 1959, I'm sorry, Summitt Elementary built in 1968, I'm sorry, 77 percent. And then Wilson Elementary, our oldest building, opened in 1959, and the numbers that came back was 105 percent. So to renovate Wilson as it sits, not including the modular units that are outside of Wilson, would cost us more to try to renovate it than to rebuild it. Nego Middle School, our newest building, was opened in 1999. The report showed that it had a 26 percent renovation to replacement ratio. Anderson High School, our second oldest building, opened in 1961, it's had a couple of additions since then, has a 64 percent replacement to, or excuse me, renovation to replacement ratio. And Turpin, opened in 1976, has a 62 percent ratio. So I'm going to stop there for a moment and ask if there are any questions as we go through this. Now, again, I'm doing this primarily for our community and our audience, because the board, we've seen this, you've seen this, these figures. Okay?
What?
Go ahead, thank you.
What does the OFCC not assess? There was 24 items on there that they did assess. Can you tell us what they didn't look at?
They looked at just about everything, right?
What's not included in there are things like athletic rooms, matatoriums, athletic facilities. They're going to look at a gym, this is part of a PE space, but virtually any of the other athletic facilities aren't included in that.
Thank you.
The weight room itself, part of it is included, because it does have part of the physical education classes involved.
Locker rooms, for example, that they use from, you know, if they're identified for athletics, are included, those VTR.
Correct.
Are the swimming pools not?
Swimming pools are not.
Is that because they, when they give money, they don't give money for those items, correct?
Actually, they do not give money for those items.
That's what I said.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, no, yeah, that's what I meant, if I didn't say it, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Now, we can come back and discuss the OFCC as we move along in your discussion and those types of things, but I also wanted to share with you just some of the highlights of the most recent survey. So we'll move along with that.
Excuse me.
Yeah, go ahead, Randy.
Right, so then, if you were to assess the cost of true replacement, that calculation, that ratio is actually low, because if we were going to replace, we'd replace it with a pool and a gym and other modest.
Correct. The cost of renovating doesn't include renovating and updating those facilities as well. So whether it's renovating or replacement, they've left those out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good. Okay, some of the community survey highlights, again, back in, late, just a couple months ago, the board commissioned the scientific community survey to be conducted by Fallon Research. I think it's very important that the respondents that were randomly selected were all registered voters in Forest Hills. The data was stratified in a lot of different ways, so that the differences are in vital characteristics such as age of our respondents, the race, their genders, their geography where they lived, and were all representative proportion to their percentage of electorate. And then going back to the respondents themselves too, is that they were a true cross-representation of residents in the Forest Hills community. In regards to, there were senior citizens that were surveyed, younger voters were surveyed, male and female, in proportion to, well, in proportion in regards to the residents that had students within Forest Hills, as to residents that not have students in Forest Hills. So, the makeup of the survey was truly a representation of our district.
Dr. Jackson.
Yes, go ahead.
Did the school board or the board office, the district office, have any say in who was a part of that?
Absolutely none, no.
How did they, how did they select them?
That's a great question, we'd have to talk to Fallon Research. But really, they were all registered voters, and they went to the voter list and got a lot of that information from that in regards to, okay. Okay. So, moving along, and the reason I want to start off with, just remember, they also did a 2010 survey, so it was a little about, little over three years later when they completed their second survey, but I thought there was a couple of things I'd just kind of point out quickly. The first one, and these are just real positive things for the district, that in 2010, remember just a few years ago, over 80 percent of the district is doing an excellent or good or fair job in spending tax dollars. So the question really said, in your opinion, how would you rate the job of the Forest Hills local school district in its done with spending? And you can see that they rated it excellent or good, that's the higher column at 57 percent, fair at 25, nine poor, or very poor, and nine unsure. The reason I put that in, because Fallon asked a couple of the same types of questions, just for some research data that he uses, and so I thought that was interesting that in this new survey, yeah, okay, in the new survey, the same question exactly, how would you, in your opinion, how would you rate the job of the Forest Hills school district has done in spending your taxpayers' money in an effective, responsible manner? The data went up from 57 to 68 percent excellent. So, and fair dropping to 18 from 25, and then six total of very poor, poor, and also eight unsure. So, those data is moving up. So I think that shows that our community, at least based on this survey, is, has some pretty good, fills a pretty good representation in regards to how we're doing in spending their money, so, in our district. Okay. Conditioner facilities, and I'm sorry, I should have made these bars just a little bit larger, but let me kind of just go through, there's just a couple slides with some data points on it. The first question that I'm sharing is, it says in general, here's the question, do you think that Forest Hills local school districts, school buildings and classrooms are good facilities that need no major improvements? Adequate facilities that need some updating but no rebuilding? Or poor facilities that need to be replaced? Or do you not have enough information at this time for your opinion? So let's go back to that. So people that said good were just 6 percent that says that, that they are good facilities that need no major improvements. 47 percent said adequate, in other words, that they need to be some updating or renovating but no rebuilding. 14 percent said poor, that they need to be replaced. And then we have a 30 percent who is saying no opinion, and I think that's very important. If you take a look at this, now again, I'm not trying to, I'm just saying, if you just look at the numbers here, 30 percent is saying that they really don't have a good idea about our facilities. So remember, if you take, go back to the group of respondents, that a lot of those people were not that familiar with our district because they did not have students in our district or other means as well. Okay, so that's just kind of one of the questions as we get started here. Paul Fallon, or Fallon Research, asked about a couple of our buildings, the oldest buildings, and we'll begin with Wilson. And this question said, do you think that Wilson Elementary School should be replaced, renovated, or have nothing done to it at this time? Or are you just unsure? So, across the board though, you can say replaced, 29 percent of everyone that was surveyed said replaced, 26 percent say renovated, nothing, 12 percent, and unsure, again, 34 percent. Now, when you break this question, and I took a look at some of the data, if you look at the parents' response to this, since they knew about, I mean, people that are familiar with our district, that number of replace is a little higher. Okay. Anderson, the second oldest building in our district, the same question was asked, do you think that Anderson High School should be replaced, renovated, or have nothing done to it at this time, or no opinion, or unsure? 10 percent of the respondents said replace, 54 percent says renovate, 18 percent said do nothing to Anderson, and 17 percent were unsure. So between the two buildings, if you go back to, we won't go back, but if you remember, that unsure dropped from 34 to 17 percent, so people have a little better opinion, I think, of Anderson High School, and more people are saying renovated than replaced as opposed to Wilson, so, okay. Jeannie? Okay. One of the questions was, do you think that it's a good or a bad idea to merge the two high schools into a single new one in order to save money or lower operating cost? 26 percent say it's a good idea to consolidate one high school from two. 65 percent said it's a bad idea to consolidate two high schools to one, and 9 percent said unsure. Okay? And on that same consolidation question, we talked about the elementaries as well. Question regarding the elementary schools, generally speaking, do you think it is a good or a bad idea to consolidate elementary schools and reduce the number of them if the ratio of student and teachers remain the same and the individual class sizes did not increase? So when we take a look, similar type of question in regards to the elementaries, you can see that 52 percent thinks it has some merit, it's a good idea. 40 percent said bad idea, and 8 percent said unsure, with consolidating from the number that we have now, six, to something smaller, if the student-teacher ratios remain the same or individual class sizes did not increase. Now, this is the overall people. When I took a look at the parents' respondents, they were a little higher in regards to, bad idea was a little higher in regards to consolidating, but overall, the general community thought there was right around that 50 percent mark. Okay. Couple more. Quick question regarding renovations and updates. Question was, how important would you say it is for Forest Hills local school district to get updated and renovated school facilities and classrooms? Okay, how important is it that we take a look at our facilities and update them, was the question? 32 percent said very, much. 50 percent said somewhat. 11 percent said not at all, four, or not very, I'm sorry, 4 percent said not at all, and 2 percent unsure. So if you take the very or somewhat, and as Paul Fallon would usually do and put those together, is a somewhat positive response, that 82 percent of the people that were surveyed says it's very important for us to take a look at updating and renovating our facilities. Okay. Another question, next question, Jeannie, thank you. Funding for maintenance, something that we've talked a little bit about, a lot about. Question was, how much priority should it be to provide funding for ongoing maintenance and upkeep of our existing school buildings to preserve them and prolong their use? Again, maintenance monies, and as everyone knows, and we've talked about on a number of occasions, our current maintenance dollars come from the general fund. So what this question says is, how much of a priority would it be to provide funding for ongoing maintenance? 59 percent said a very high priority, 32 percent said a medium priority, eight, low priority, zero, not a priority, and 2 percent unsure. So, the majority of our people, 59 plus 32 percent, so 91 percent think it is somewhat of a priority, if not a high priority, to look at providing some funding for some ongoing maintenance of our facilities. Okay, just a couple more. Learning spaces, getting to the, what we do, is teach, and then students learn. Question, how much priority should it be to build additional science, life sciences, computer labs in the high schools, so that there are enough to ensure that our students have sufficient access to them? Additional science and upgraded science labs and life science labs and technologies. 55 percent said that's a very high priority, 32 percent said a medium priority, eight low, one not a priority, and four unsure. Okay. Security. How much of a priority should it be to improve and upgrade our security, uh, the security, I'm sorry, and monitoring systems to prevent unauthorized entry into our buildings during the school day? Again, a very high percentage, 53 percent says it's a very high priority, 31 percent said a medium priority, 13 low, two not a priority, and two unsure. And the last chart that I'm going to share is the appearance chart, and the question, which I thought was very interesting, how much priority would it be to modernize the appearances of some of our older buildings so that they are visually appealing? Now, because I've heard from a number of people, and I'm not trying to generalize things, but when you drive by our facilities, they look good, but there does not, you know, they're not that wow, pizzazz, or whatever that might be. Appearance, only 9 percent says it's a high priority to upgrade the outside of our facilities for appearance purposes. 39 percent say it's a medium priority, but 46 percent say it's a low priority, and 4 percent not a priority, and two unsure.
Does this really mean the outside of the buildings, or does it mean, I mean, if we have somebody coming to move here, does the appearance include the inside because...
It says to modernize the appearance of some of the older buildings. So, I'm assuming that this was an exterior, kind of a drive-by question, I mean, the way I took it, the way I read it. But what I also take it as is that if you go back to those last couple of the questions about education, and again, maybe it's because I'm an educator, but people have a high priority on what goes on inside those buildings, and the learning spaces inside those buildings. And yes, it's nice to have a nice, appealing structure, but does it, you know, to modernize the appearance of our older buildings so that they are visually appealing, I think that was an outside question. I could be wrong though.
Okay.
Okay, we can't really try to interpret how other people might have interpreted that. Randy, you have a question?
Yeah, just to clarify, these are all unaided and unprompted, correct?
Absolutely.
And so, the fact that we had such a positive response from a representative cross-section of the community, I think is, it's significant. Like I said, because if there was no prompting, no aid, this was just based on their existing knowledge when they took the survey, that's, like I said, I think that's pretty significant, better than what I would expect of their understanding of our situation.
Okay, so I spent a little time on those questions, because I was actually quite fascinated with them myself, and the board has had an opportunity to take a look at these, and, but I wanted to put them in graphic form, so you can take a look at those. So some considerations for discussions, and I don't mean to lead your discussions or anything like that, but some of the things that I just kind of put in here that we thought about was, some of the discussions could be, you know, do the costs of renovating the current facilities outweigh the cost of building new ones? Another question, and then we can go back to these or any other questions or discussions you might have. Can the facilities be renovated to accommodate our 21st century instructional delivery practices and our modern technologies? Are the facilities property size for the population of today and the future? Now, the reason I say that is, the facilities commission, the construction commission literally rated eight of our, well, actually, all of our elementaries as undersized. Mercer was close, I think, but many of them, in other word, capacity-wise, are overcapacity right now with what the students we have in them, and Turpin as well. Anderson has some space, and Nego, I believe, is right there. So, and then moving on, another thing, the question to maybe think about is, are the buildings well-lit, spacious, comfortable? I think that's all important. Will the facilities be operationally efficient? I think that's key. And does the environment impart a feeling of safety and well-being? I think Julie, kind of getting back to that environment, that interior, interior environment as well, you know, is it appealing, does it for not just our onlookers or visitors, but it's for our students and our staff? So, I'll kind of leave it at that, I'll be, Rick, myself, Ray, we're all involved in those. Ray?
One thing I would want to add, I meant, and I apologize for not saying this before, is the OFCC numbers do not include adding square footage gains in all this. So the renovation or rebuild is for the same square footage as there right now. So if we have a building that we feel is half or overcapacity or needs more space, it doesn't include adding, it's not include adding space.
Well, they have indicated, based on their numbers, right? Okay.
What they're saying is, is they're not forcing the hand of the district in terms of a master plan. The district may choose to add additional square footage, may choose to add other buildings, may choose to do a lot of things. What they're saying is, that building, you know, they're not making determination on that, because that's the question that came up before. But it's basically taking the same square footage and looking, what would it cost to renovate that footprint and build something new to the same square footage?
And at least in the case of Maddox and, well, Wilson will be built, but Maddox has to have space added if we're going to do something about the trailers.
Correct. So what they're saying is, we could keep the trailers if we wanted them.
Yeah, but they won't pay for them with OFCC.
Dr. Jackson, can you talk to us about what it means to qualify for the OFCC dollars? Where we are in the list, and whether we'd want their money if they offered it to us?
There are a lot of different stipulations when it comes to OFCC dollars. Basically, let's start with the qualification. When the Ohio School Facilities Commission was put into existence many years ago, there was this large pot of money, and so they determined who got...
Tobacco settlement.
Tobacco settlement, exactly what it was. So the tobacco settlement, many years ago. So they determined who was at most need, and they did that on a number of priorities, but basically, it was the need of the district in regards to the ability to pay. And at that time, there were districts in our state that the facilities were simply atrocious, so I'm not knocking that at all. So, anyway, so they listed all the 614 school districts at the time, from one of the most neediest was number one, all the way up through 614. We are ranked at 500 and, Rick, help me out here, 80-ish?
580.
580-ish, 585. So, at the time and still today, because it has changed by a point or two as the years go by, because they reevaluate it every year, but we're still at that 585 need. Now, going back...
Now, going back, the monies that were made available on a percentage basis was made available to the school, at a higher proportion, a higher percentage to a school district with the highest need. I give you a quick example. In Lima, Ohio, they were very low on the list. They were some of the first schools to have gotten some school, all of their schools totally replaced. The state gave them 90 cents on the dollar. So let's just take an example of a hundred million dollar project. The taxpayers paid 10%, the state paid 90. That's a pretty good deal. Okay? Ours is at 85% taxpayer to 15% state. So not, still, okay, 15% versus 85, okay, that's something to consider. But then you look at some of the other points that OFCC. What they shared with us, we would have to do to their exact specifications. So if they said that, for instance, we'll just take any building, take Air Elementary. If they say that Air was, capacity was, Ray, was it 450-ish at Air, I believe, or something like, we'll just use that as an example. And we currently have over 600 students in Air. So if we were to do anything in Air, we would have to bring it up to those specifications or add space another third the size of the building.
Actually, 379.
379. So we'd have to double the size of that building.
To qualify for their 15% dollars.
To qualify for the 15%. So it's those things that you have to take into consideration. And the expedited program that we kind of explored here, and that's what this is, is a new program that was put into existence a couple of years ago, that says, go ahead and do what you want to do, piece by piece, if you want. Let's just say that we chose to do some renovations to our buildings and maybe rebuild a building or so, or whatever, whatever plan that we'd have. They wouldn't give us any money, but if we did it to their specifications and piecemeal it, like one building this year and another building a couple of years from now, we'd have to complete the entire process before we would qualify for their 15%.
And then it would only be there for us if there was still money in the fund at the time we completed.
At the time we completed everything. That's correct. So I, kind of a quick, down and dirty in regards to OFCC.
Yeah, let's just, just clarify, to get that 15%, it's not just square feet, there are other things that they might require that we might not, we might choose not to do. So the bottom line is, it would cost us more than the 15% likely than it would to get their 15%.
Well, remember, remember the other things that are included that we talked about. So the cost would be more. So we would have it in, and we could cash in our 15% whenever our number came up in the ranking. And they were very upfront, is that's assuming the money's still there, there's no guarantee of that.
School districts that are similar to us, higher achieving school districts, suburban school districts, one I can think of that is working on facilities now is Marymont. Are they building to OFCC standards? Do you know?
I couldn't answer that question specifically. I mean, I've been in the new elementary. I would have, my guess is, having walked through that building, probably so, but that's just a guess from walking through the building. I don't know.
I mean, I'm hearing all sort of negative things about going with the OFCC recommendations, but I'm not hearing anything positive at all. Do people do OFCC?
I don't think that's, at least, that's not the way I look at it. What I look at it as, the work we got from OFCC, that big old binder that's sitting in front of Dr. Jackson, that's hugely valuable information. And we may want to adopt the recommendations they've made, but we could probably do more for the community and make more with the, more improvements with the dollars that we have ourselves if we didn't take their 15%. I don't know that that means we're not taking their information, because I still think that's great information, and what we've learned about our buildings is invaluable. If we didn't take advantage of it, we would be foolish.
Well, we're talking about two different things here. One is what we do, and then what we're talking about now is how we pay for it, and whether we get any money from them or not. I don't think, the fact that their funding system may not favor us, that doesn't have any impact to me on all the data and the recommendations and everything else they provided. Those are two different things.
It's not negative. OFCC has been phenomenal for many, many school districts across the state. It just that when districts get, when you're higher up on the priorities list in regards to the, you know, like us at 580s, it just, sometimes I believe, might be more costly for us.
Yeah, I didn't mean to imply that what they did was valuable. I mean, we've been eager to get this data for a long time. I guess if we went all in with them, it's a, it's a cost-benefit thing. I mean, that's what I'm hearing. We get so little from them, we could do more maybe ourselves than by taking their money, is what you're saying. Is that too simplistic?
Well, particularly because we're still, I don't know where we are in the list, vis-a-vis other schools in front of us. I don't know how many are still there. So the only way we're going to get their money is the expedited program anyhow. And then, is that right?
Yes, correct.
So we're not going to get it until we're complete with all our work, and then it still may not be there. So what I do is, we take the value of the information they've provided and see what we can do with the money that we've decided to put into the plan, and see if the community, of course, will support that plan, too.
Just a slight correction on that. Anything we would do, yes, would have to meet their criteria. We don't have to complete the whole process. It's when our number comes up, you know, when our number comes up, anything we've done, we can use to apply that credit. So we don't, we will not have, I think Milford should actually do that now, is they've done some things under the ALP program, and now their numbers come up. So they're using that credit towards paying for additional work that they're going to have done.
Their percentage that supposedly got banked?
Yeah, they, yeah, they banked that. So they're, I don't know what their percentage was, it was obviously greater than 15, but that's what they're going out for, it's going out for here recently. So their commitment is, anything that they're going to be doing has to be done towards that, but you don't have to complete the whole process.
But you can't use the banked credit to pay for existing debt, correct? It would have to be new construction.
New construction, correct.
I guess, again, I wonder, who, sort of like us, is doing it according to OFCC standards? I mean, Milford probably does get a higher percentage than we do, but I don't know if it's a significantly higher percentage and what, you know, why they decided to do it. I would like to hear from somebody who's done it, who's, you know, that's sort of like us.
Talking to their business manager, I think, one of the things they're doing is the credit they have is significant enough. I think they're using that credit to, and Rick may know more than I, to pay for, it's enough to pay for one of the new elementaries. So they're able to get a new elementary now, having used that, but yet, I don't know, you know, that difference. I mean, they paid a premium on the others to get that.
You said their number comes up, came up. Do you know what number that was?
Milford, I can tell you.
One of the things, Julie, that I talked to an architect, and they were saying, one of the things with the OFCC, one of the cost problems is that they, he said, micromanage what you do and how you build. And his example, and I don't know any particulars, but it's a certain type of yellow pine has to be used. Not the pine, not the yellow pine that 90% of the construction community uses, it's a special type, which is a premium. And he said, those are the things that add up just in the nuts and bolts of putting it together, that make most districts who are getting in that 15 to 20% shy away from it because that, those are where the cost overruns come, right off the bat.
And I think if you look back at, to the districts on the other end of the list, those are districts that, once they build these buildings, they're going to have very few dollars to maintain them. So they are going to use the best quality of whatever, because that might have a longer life or something to it. I'm not saying that we wouldn't, but at the same time, it does add additional cost.
Milford's in the mid-four, more 400, 460. They completed ALP project, and they're in the middle of the CFAB project.
So another 100 schools somewhere there, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I thought in one of the reports that we were given, that we were told, and I may be, may be mistaken about this, where did the number 516 come from?
That is a new number, the five-
Okay, so it's not 585?
Correct. I'm sorry.
It's 516.
That was my number, I believe.
Okay.
It's a three-year average, it's adjusted, and that's a three-year valuation number. Average valuation determines that number.
That's what happens when you go off the top of your head.
That's okay. As Jim said to me, it's really, probably not that significant anyway.
Ray, I was at the new school board member workshop, and they were talking about this. And Mason, I think, did everything the OFCC asked. I think Westchester did not. So place to start, maybe. Lakota's built some things recently.
I've seen, I've gone, I've seen, going towards a Reynoldsburg building, new high school, and had the opportunity to go through that, and so kind of see some of the differences. And I think the classic example is when they talk about square footage. We talked to Paul Brown and Raul, and he said, the organization realizes some of the criticism for that, so they've given schools some flexibility, but I think when they met with Dallas and Rick, they still said, they're still pretty much sticking to that formula, so many square feet per student.
But the bottom line from all this conversation and similar conversations we've had in the past is, we have little reason to believe or hope that we're going to get funding from OFCC anywhere in the near future, or that it would have any or much value to Forest Hills. So my walk away from this is, we need to be self-sufficient on whatever funding we're thinking about for whatever facility projects we have.
Well, I would assume we're going to be self-sufficient, but I wouldn't forego the possibility that we might take advantage of their money. I mean, as we go through this process and start to develop a plan, we're going to have to weigh what they'd require us to do against the 15%. Because then the expedited program, we do have a better likelihood of getting some of that money.
Oh, if it's an opportunity, especially if we would earn the credit going down the road, sure. I mean, of course, we're not going to turn it down.
Ray, I agree, shoot for self-sufficient, but I wouldn't ignore the possibility.
Rick, what do you, what's your take on this? You're shaking your head. I want to hear what you say.
No, I think we initially, as we did in '04, we ended this with gaining information. I mean, that was very costly services for free to update kind of where we are with facilities and did not expect, you know, it to get a lot better, and it didn't. I mean, it affirmed, you know, what we believed in '04, that, you know, building systems obviously need to be replaced. And, you know, high level, you know, more of a call to action to do something, you know, we have, you know, nine buildings and, you know, eight of them in a aging state of repair. So I think that was the, kind of what we went into it. And I think, I kind of agree with some of the discussion at the end here, is that I think, you know, there's some opportunities for, to look at funding. These are, I mean, if you look at their website, it's color-coded, but every district, I should say, most districts, only the white ones here have done nothing. Most districts are doing something related to their program, even if it's just what we did so far in that is get a demographic and assessment, building assessment. So, you know, I think we're still able to do all of this. And, you know, they are educational specialists, and obviously, we need to look and see what funding opportunities we have, but we can. I also would agree that, based on where we are, we might be splitting nickels when it comes to actually getting some funding. But I don't think that should get in the way of what we're doing, you know, moving forward.
Okay.
So we're going to be meeting again Saturday, February 8th, 8 o'clock. Everybody's welcome, with a further work session, and we're going to talk about some of these considerations Dr. Jackson put up on the board, and probably a process for moving this thing forward. In maybe the last 10 minutes we've got here, entertain anything else that isn't on anyone else's mind, but if maybe the last thing, Dr. Jackson, you can do for us is talk about timing considerations for when we would have to go out with something.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns?
Can I just confirm one thing that you said? Just a, it was a question that came up. The survey research data was gathered through telephone interviews, that's specially trained interviews conducted with 300 randomly selected registered voters of the Forest Hills local school districts who had valid residential or cellular telephone numbers. The interviews were performed during the period December 9th through December 12th, 2013. The overall estimated margin of sampling error was plus or minus 5.65% based on a confidence level of 95%, although it varies for each individual question. This means that if this survey was presented 95 times out of 100, the results would be within plus or minus 5.65% of the information provided. So I just thought I'd just clarify the database. That was a question that we asked earlier.
If then, Jim, I've got the same card you do, and I didn't write the information down, but primarily, if the board, if we're looking at being on the ballot, and let's say, some of, maybe an upcoming election, let's take the next November election. If the board were going to be on the ballot on November the 4th of 2014, then everything would have to be completed by the first week of August. And so then you work backwards. And so primarily, there's two different resolutions that have to be voted upon positively. And so really, everything would have, usually that takes about a month. We could have a special work session and those types of things, but so, a little over a month, and then, so I guess the question would be, if we were going to be on the ballot in November, that the board would have to have a plan in place, discuss that plan, look at the dollar figures to go with that plan. We would get the resolutions to the board probably in July, so that then the board, early July, if not late June, so that then the board could have the month of July to do the resolutions by, be completed by the first week of August.
All right, so I've got the same card that you've got, but I don't understand it. The first thing we have to do is what's called a resolution of necessity, is that right?
That's correct.
Is that what has to be done by August 6th, or?
No, has to be complete, everything has to be completed by August 6th.
So the last thing we do is the resolution to proceed, that has to be done by August 6th.
August 6th and filed with the-
Department of Taxation.
Department of Taxation.
So you got to back up at least two months before-
I'd say at least a month plus. I mean, you can, five, six weeks, so that's why I'm saying July.
July 7th is the- There's a systems issue, Rick. Once you file the resolution of necessity, there's some calculations that have to take place, right?
We get the millage then back from the county auditor, and then-
That's the lead time.
Then you know what that millage is. Since you mentioned, you know, you work two different ways with a bond issue versus an operating levy. A bond issue, you have determined through the analysis and community engagement that we need X dollars. What does that translate into millage? That's what we will ask the county auditor to determine, and that will be part of what's on the ballot for a bond issue. For a PI or an operating levy, it would be a millage amount. How much will that generate per year? That's the other side.
Okay.
So if you were to do something combined, you'd do it two different ones, or?
They have to, actually, they have to be together. We would, I think the resolutions would have to be clear, because the language that the board would approve would have to be what is then potentially on the ballot. So I think they would be combined at the end there.
Anyone, anything else before we move on?
Well, then, yeah, the next, if the next general election would be May of 2015, and it would be the same thing, several weeks prior to, in this case, if you look back, it says May of 14, so you just kind of would, everything would have to be completed probably by that first week of February.
Right.
And the, obviously, August is a special, and November is a general election, obviously, for those that need to know that part of it as well.
Well, that was fun. We have a motion to approve the minutes from the policy meeting of December 3rd.
So moved?
Second.
Mr. Taft?
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mr. Hemelgarn?
Yes.
Mr. Frumman?
Yes.
And next, approval of the minutes for the regular meeting on December 16th of 2013. And motion?
So moved?
Second. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mr. Himmelgarn?
Yes.
Mr. Frumman?
Yes.
Correspondence to the Board of Education, the Treasurer Superintendent, Dr. Jackson?
I have three pieces of correspondence I'd like to share with the board. The first piece of correspondence comes from Senator Shannon Jones. I received this just a week or so ago, and it says, "Congratulations on receiving the Auditor of State Award from the State Auditor David Yost. As your state senator, I proudly recognize this outstanding achievement. I applaud the integrity and utmost accountability for which Forest Hills Local School District has operated for many years. Your flawless bookkeeping is a testament of your reliability to those of your community." So, accommodation or actually congratulations regarding our most recent Auditor of State of having a clean audit. So, congratulations to Rick and his staff, and to our district, and to the board.
And for how many years in a row is that?
We take them one at a time, so.
Well, two of the people that have been doing it, at least one of them is retiring, right? And what they say is, "We love coming here," so that's a real compliment.
And they also make it clear that while this has become the norm for us, and some of us may seem to take it for granted, but we don't, we appreciate and recognize what fantastic job you and your staff do.
Well, to Dallas's point, everybody jumps in. I think it's a, we kind of keep score in our areas, so we have to be that part of the game, but it's a, something we take very seriously. I appreciate the boards, you know, every year, we strive for educational excellence, and the board puts that same emphasis in our financial reporting, cost management, and all the other things that go with that. And I know our taxpayers appreciate that, and my office truly does as well.
I can, I can say, having been on the administrative side for a long time, Rick's office strives for a perfect audit, not just a good audit. And there's a lot that we have to do every day that's over and above, that makes a huge difference when the auditors come in, so thanks, Rick.
He really means that, Rick. Or meant that.
Last year, the Auditor Yost came down and personally gave Rick the award, so that says a lot.
Okay. Another piece, I'm really excited, because I just received this one today. This is actually going from our state to the federal government. So, this comes from the United States Department of Education, and it says, "On behalf of the White House Commission on Presidential Scholars and the United States Department of Education, it's our pleasure to congratulate you, because a student from your district of Forest Hills has been selected as a candidate for the United States Presidential Scholars Program." And that particular student, we remember recognizing her just last month, that received a perfect ACT score. So, with that, again, Rebecca Tian has been honored. She gets to apply now. She's one of only 3,000 kids across the country that have this recognition, and she may be one of 140 that actually gets to visit Washington, D.C. So, I'm really pleased for her in particular and her family, but also, thanks to the letter from the U.S. Department of Education. And then, another piece of information that I received just today as well, kind of on another note, something we're going to be talking about here a little later on in the meeting, is in regards to calamity days. Governor Kasich this morning's stated in a press, to the press, that he would like to, our legislature, to explore additional calamity days. As everyone knows, it's been a pretty rough winter across the state, so Kasich is asking our lawmakers to pass a one-time increase due to the severe winter. Whether that comes to fruition or to not is beside, but it's something that is definitely on our governor's mind as well. And then, we're going to talk a little bit about a possible option that we might be able to use as well.
They're talking about two days additional? Is that what?
There is no date. Yes, he has.
That's what I heard on the radio, yeah.
It was on the radio, too.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Taft?
Procedure for public commentary, as many of you know, this is not a public meeting, but is a meeting held in public. If anyone wants to speak at the appropriate time, the board will recognize you. Fill out a green card there up front here by the door. I've got one now, but I saw a lot of people coming in, and I suspect there's some more up there, so, no, not yet. If you want to speak, please get your green cards up there, so we can recognize you at appropriate time. Next, we have a concussion presentation.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes, Mr. Frumman. I am extremely honored to present Dr. Stephen Fagins and Lisa Sweeterman. Dr. Fagins is the Vice President of Medical Affairs, Mercy Hospital Anderson, and Lisa Sweeterman is Wellington Orthopedic and Sports Medicine Director of Community Outreach. I think, you still have that title?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to say, first of all, Mercy and Wellington are phenomenal partners with the school district. I work with these people quite often. We have private meetings together with what we can do to help improve our education. Both Wellington and Mercy have really stepped up in regards to what they offer in our students at the high school level in particular, with their internships and their shadowing programs, and what they do with our kids in regards to, especially athletics, in regards to concussions. And when we started talking about this, actually, last year, with just the impact testing, this is so much larger than impact testing, and that's what Dr. Fagins and Lisa want to share with you this evening for just a few minutes. So, thank you.
Well, great. Thanks so much after hearing about the students. I'm not sure I would be able to actually graduate from this district, but I've been, I'm, Steve Fagins, I'm internal medicine and sports medicine. Lisa Sweeterman is athletic trainer, as well as a number of other things, and I've dealt with concussion since I was an Air Force doctor, dealing with mild traumatic brain injury of all types. 10 years at Wittenberg, and now, you know, here with this district. And so, concussion is something that, you know, not that long ago, when we'd stand on the sideline and we'd see somebody kind of get dinged and sort of like go to the wrong huddle, or kind of act strange, we'd laugh about that. Not that much long ago, we would actually laugh at people when they would kind of get drunk and sort of waddle around and get in the car and drive. We don't laugh about that anymore. We don't laugh about getting in a car drunk, and we don't laugh about getting dinged on the head and being a little bit confused. And so, we want to tell you a little bit about what we know to date about concussions, mild traumatic brain injury, what we do about that, and where the athletes, the student athletes of this district, I think, are well-positioned to find those things and to deal with them.
Do you have it? She's got it.
Oh. Just have to. Okay. So, some concussions are easy to diagnose. That's me at Wittenberg, and we're just about ready to call in the helicopter to come in to, when there's loss of consciousness, go ahead. This is Dr. Michael Finley, when playing the Bengals, and has the classic, comes up, goes down, has the vertigo, early loss of consciousness. Everybody in the stadium, I was actually there watching that, knew that he had a concussion. And in fact, you may know that he came back to play, three weeks later, he had a second impact concussion, and spent almost a week in the intensive care unit. Sports-related injuries, some number of 2.6 million actually hospitalized per year. 300,000 of those are to the brain. 20% of high school, 40% of college football players, or helmeted football players, get a head injury at some point in their career. And in fact, head and neck injuries are responsible for the great majority of deaths in sports. Football's the most common. This is hard to see, but if you see, this is number of concussions per thousand through an athlete exposure. Down at the very bottom is football. There's men's lacrosse, women's and men's hockey. So, the helmeted sports are those that have the highest incident of concussions that we know in either practice or sport. Go ahead. We've moved as far as we can with helmet technology. Padding around the head helps to eliminate or reduce a fracture of the skull, but doesn't eliminate or reduce the actual movement inside the skull. So, what we want to do, what we need now to do is actually to cushion the inside of the skull. And so, what a traumatic brain injury is, or concussion is, is actually that linear acceleration/deceleration, where the brain goes forward, comes back, and is injured at that point. We used to call it like a brain bruise or something. We know now that it's more of a metabolic injury. And so, it can either be a linear force or a rotational force. And the rotational forces are those that cause actually more metabolic damage. And we used to think that getting hit to the side, it was the temporal load that was being affected. In fact, what it is, it's the rotational force that's causing more of the metabolic damage. Click on that, it should, it should move. So, here's what we're talking about. It's not the what's outside the skull, it's what's inside the skull, either from the front or the side. And so, we start to think about athletes, younger athletes, with less neck muscles, that whiplash injury. You don't even have to get on, hit on the head to get a concussion. You can get hit in the body and have that whiplash injury and cause a concussion. That's simulating the metabolic type of disturbance that occurs. So, what confuses us, and probably confuses you, is there are all these guidelines. There are over 20, 22 different guidelines based on basically clinical experience, not necessarily evidence, that guided this. We had various grading systems, various return-to-play decisions. You may have been told at one time that you should wake up someone every hour to make sure they're, I guess, still alive, or, you know, something. And we know much more than that. In fact, the number three, Dr. Robert Cantu, the American College of Sports Medicine Guidelines, that's the guidelines that we always use. And Dr. Cantu is the medical director for the Boston University, the Brain Bank, that you may hear about, where the NFL players and actually some younger players, those brains are studied there, and where Dr. Cantu is actually the physician who came up with the chronic traumatic encephalopathy, the CTE, that which NFL players have been diagnosed with. So, impact, neuropsychiatric testing. Forest Hills District has started, been testing this as baseline since 2010. It's like any kind of vital sign, or any kind of abnormal lab result, you know? Dr. Heiss can tell you that if somebody comes in and is kind of not normal, what's the first thing he asks? Well, what did it used to be? What do you compare it to? If someone's at the 50th percentile, did they start at the 100th, or did they start at the 30th percentile? And so, getting a baseline for this impact testing is necessary but not sufficient.
So, what your athletes are doing, we mostly test your collision and contact sport athletes. So, what your athletes are doing is this neurological testing. We put them in a quiet room, well, there are 20 other kids in there, so we try to make it as quiet as possible. But we use your libraries, we put them in the room, and they do their own test. And it's about 20, 25-minute test, and it looks at all kinds of different things, reaction time, composite testing, it looks at speed. So, for example, the word "red" will come up on the screen. If that word is written in red, that's a yes. If it's written in green, that's a no. How quickly can the child process that information? That gives us the baseline. So, we do these tests, starting at 11-years-old, every two years throughout their entire career. And that allows the test to grow with the child, as their child's development grows as well. Then, that's our baseline. That's ideally, we take that test when they're healthy. Then, as we've become concussed, or ever we have an injury, like Dr. Fagin said, we have what their normal is. We have their baseline, which then allows us to go back. We test them after the concussion, and then we can compare those two tests, and it gives us a better idea of how they're progressing through their concussion. But it's only a piece.
Right. So, the impact, so back up just a second. So, the reason we know much more is because you want to do this sort of perfect neuropsychiatric testing that happens the exact same way every time, that measures seconds, you know, to the microsecond of response time. That's what a computer's perfect for. And so, this computerized testing helped us to really standardize. In the mid-1990s, from the University of Pittsburgh, we're now on impact three, and this is the same test that, you know, a professional athlete, a high school athlete, an NCAA athlete, you know, almost all collision sport athletes get tested on now. This is to give you an example. So, this is just the Cantu guidelines of the way we would grade a concussion. It would be based on loss of consciousness. This is one of those 22 different guidelines. And it comes, turns out that you might have a player who has no loss of consciousness, but doesn't return to full cognitive function for months. You may have a player that has a full loss of consciousness and may return to cognitive function, you know, in three days. So, the point being is that these grading scales, based on just clinical experience, really didn't give us prognosis. And so, we have really simplified the diagnosis of concussion a lot. Basically, yes or no. You either have a concussion, or you don't. And one of the key things that we learned is that we cannot make that decision on the sideline. For a suspected concussion, we really need to make that decision the next day. And so, if you look at the Ohio High School Athletic Sports Medicine website, you know, the very first thing, you can't see it there, is concussion. Concussion everywhere, concussion there, keep going. And so, Ohio was the 39th state to enact a concussion law, which we actually very much support. This really, this really basically puts into law what we did, which is, anyone since April of last year, an official, or a coach, or part of the medical team, any one of those three can suspect a concussion. It's a hit or suspected concussion. That player's removed and does not return that same day. We've seen plenty of players that look like a concussion the next day, on examination turns out not to be concussion, that player can come back to play. Seen folks that I don't think they had a concussion, but we'll see the next day, it's very clear, based on impact and other testing, that they did in fact have a concussion. And so, we need to go down the cognitive rest as opposed to return to play. And so, no athlete in the state, in fact, 49 states now have this law, Mississippi being the only one that doesn't, has almost an identical law for return to play.
And understand, it's not just for the state of Ohio high school athletics. It is for all athletes that play all sports in the state of Ohio. The OHSAA adopted the state of Ohio's rule on that. So, it's anybody playing in a Pee-wee league, it's anybody playing in any type of sport that's sanctioned by anybody, that they have to abide by that Ohio law.
And the return-to-play clearance can only be done by a physician. Now, we can, actually, school boards can actually delegate that authority, but we, it's a physician to us.
That's a good question. Doesn't that put a lot of stress pressure on coaches and parent coaches? I mean, if you're saying it applies to little kids, too, then the parent coach has to make that determination. I mean, have we had any problems with that that you know of?
In fact, it's quite the opposite, we've found, because then it takes it out of your hands. It really, then you don't have to make the decision, can they go back to play? Are they healthy enough to? The decision's been taken out of your hands, and oh, okay, we see a sign or symptom, which your coaches will be educated on, because most of them will take some type of class that educates them on what those signs and symptoms are. And then, so as soon as one of those is seen as, pardon the expression, a no-brainer, they're out. Now, where we do run into trouble is when the parents aren't educated themselves about the rule. I ran into an issue, we actually had to call the cops on a parent's at a high school out in Bethel, because the parent kept coming after the ref and I, because we pulled their kid out of a JV football game. They didn't understand the rule. The child showing symptoms, we pulled them, no option to go back. So, it really comes down to the education and the idea that anything is seen, they're done.
All coaches, as part of the coaching permit, all officials must do a one-hour training on concussions. It's good for three years. And it used to be that, prior to this law, the previous law was that an official or a coach could point it out, and the sideline medical team could return that player to the game. Or even the opposing team ref, a trainer, could return that to the game. We prefer this. We prefer just, you're out, we don't have to discuss the issue. The official, the coach, or the medical staff can all make that determination. But that's the form that you have to fill out. A lot of people don't know that. There is an official form. It's very easy to download from the website.
Now, even parent administrators, any assistant coaches, everyone, you have to have a, you get a little concussion test that goes through, ad nauseam, all the signs and symptoms of what it is. And it's, it's a big change, because, you know, the parents are the ones, although coaches are starting to get it more, that, you know, nothing's more, nothing's that important, that, you know, so you go through and you'll see it a lot more. I mean, even in soccer games and everything like that, you hit your head, it's becoming more accepted.
It's actually, I mean, we see a lot of parents who are pretty upset at the time the student athlete is pulled, on the next day or the following day, you see them in the office. You explain some things about what can occur, kind of what we're talking about here, and they pretty much get it, so.
Well, as soon as parents see a change in their child's attitude or behavior the next day, if they are concussed, it kind of wakes them up a little bit. They're like, oh, okay, my kid's normally not that lethargic, or, you know, that difficult, or having that kind of memory problem, so. But he's right, sometimes it does take a little cooling down. But what it does for us, as well as the medical staff, it also prevents that coach from running up to us and trying to talk us into letting that- up to us and trying to talk us into letting that athlete play. And the parents do the same, but the pressure comes mostly from the coaches and that game time decision, so.
But I will tell you, I've been on the sideline of teams from this district, and coaches have pointed out kids for us to look at. It's a really collaborative, quite work. So the difference between high school and college, the younger you are, and so, this neuropsychiatric, computerized testing allowed us to learn some things. We used to think that the younger you are, the quicker you return back from the concussion. It's just the opposite. The younger you are, the more plastic the brain is, it's still forming, it actually takes longer. Where an NCAA athlete may take a week, a high school athlete would take two, or possibly three weeks, to get back to that cognitive level. Not only is it return to play, but it's return to learn, return to the classroom decision. The treatment is cognitive rest. You get in a dark room. In fact, when we begin to exercise people, we exercise them on a bike, in a completely dark room. And so, our first decision is actually the ability to return to the classroom. I would have several athletes at Wittenburg, and that would be a big deal. They really couldn't take tests and things like that. We know more about that. Amnesia, not loss of consciousness, is actually the main indicator of severity, and even mild concussions can have a significant effect. We actually, if we do grade concussions in our head, it's the degree and type of what you don't remember. Do you remember what was going on right before you got hit? Or do you have an amnesia for just after that? And that helps us with prognosis. This is the other part of that. So the IMPACT test is a tremendous vital sign. It's like the blood pressure. It's part of it, but not the other. This is, I just showed you this form, this is called acute concussion evaluation, comes from the CDC. This is the other half of what we do. There's 22 symptoms, we grade that, this is a part of not only return to play, but return to learn. Go ahead and go to the second, that's the other page of that. So, just to give you an idea of when we, you know, evaluate for concussion, it's the IMPACT test, which is the neuropsychiatric as well as that. Go ahead. So what happens? What is a concussion? I want to leave you with this. It's really a metabolic injury. No, there's no, there's no movement. They just like, that's a really cool, cool picture that we like. So it's, go ahead. It's actually at the neuron level. So what happens is, when you get hit, and you have a concussion, the neurons basically pour out potassium and take in calcium. And they have to use all their, what's called ATP pumps, to pump that out. It's like the bilge in a sinking boat. And so, the whole cell has to work to write that imbalance. And the way, you know, neurons work is like electricity, it's that electrical gradient. And so, that could take a day, a week, a month, to return that imbalance. Go ahead. Now, I put this, and this is from the resident lecture, but just to show you that that calcium, which is the longest thing to take, that's the time to heal the neuron. It's a metabolic injury. Unlike a bruise, not part of the brain, it is basically most of the neurons that are having to pump that electrical gradient. Go ahead. And that's just an example of the chronic traumatic encephalopathy from the Brain Bank. And you see the dark areas of some players who've had multiple hits over time, and it actually, you could not, that could not be distinguished from all time. So, return to play, just want to leave you with cognitive rest, with a graded exertion until we have no symptoms. And then, we actually use the IMPACT as our kind of final piles.
Yeah, so what we do at the end, when the doctor says, okay, we're okay to start some activities, we return slowly. We start with the bike, we start with just the basics. Essentially, we want to work up to modeling what your child is going to be doing on the athletic field. So, but we do that in a controlled setting. And we do that to make sure that we don't get any return symptoms with just the basics. And then, we take our time with that, we make sure that they are asymptomatic. That is the big key. They must be able to do everything, from schoolwork to athletics, without any return to symptoms. IMPACT is good, all the doctors' tests are good, and they are asymptomatic through all the things that they're going to have to do on the athletic field. Once that has been proven, then we, you know, look to return them to play on a gradual basis as well. We get them to practice a little bit before they're into a game. So we really take our time and make sure that they really are ready to return when we say they are.
So this is what IMPACT is. It's the immediate post-concussion assessment cognitive, it's the neuro, 20-minute, takes about 20 minutes. I will tell you that if a kid comes and he hasn't had seven hours of sleep, we have to redo the test. And so, sleep has a big impact on, impact on the IMPACT test. And that just goes to tell you that the kids really do need to sleep more than they do, actually. This is the modules. It's amazing to watch this. This is actually very hard to do. And it's actually had to change, as we have more and more kids, have more and more experience with video games. In that, you know, a microsecond to a kid with a video game is like, you know, two minutes to me. And so, and so, that's one of the reasons why having the baseline to be able to compare to is so important. Go ahead. This is the, go ahead.
So this is the functional progression we were talking about, just going through those stages to make sure that that athlete is really ready to return. And each stage is different for each athlete. So if, well, that first stage might take one athlete a day, it might take another athlete three or four days. You know, we always say concussions are like faces. Everyone is different, and we're going to treat everyone as an individual. And so, these are just basically what each of our athletic trainers has in their training room, and what they use to return that athlete.
So fine, in the, go ahead. Final one. And you may know that we, as part of the NFL concussion settlement, you know, we received a grant, $5,000 grant, and we will use that to do baseline IMPACT testing on every one of our athletes in 28 schools. That will also assist us in doing research, in looking, because there's so much more to learn, to understand and know. And just to leave you with these points, we, you do not return to play the same day. We don't, end of story. Cognitive and then physical rest initially, and we use both the acute concussion evaluation and the IMPACT testing. And so, you may hear that, you may like, why, my computer test is okay, but they're still doing things. That's just part of it, that's just the other part of it. And then supervise exercise program, and then return to play when is the right time to return to play. And so, we, you know, our student athletes are students first, athletes second, they really are. And it's really, their cognitive ability to be in the classroom is even more important than their ability to play. So, we really appreciate you asking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was really informative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, I just want to reiterate, those two individuals in particular that do so much for our district, not only with our young athletes, but across the district, really appreciate having two people like that work with our district. And great information. And we were one of the first districts, or at least we've been doing some of the IMPACT testing in some of our buildings, some teams, since 2010, and most recently, last year and this year, it's close to 100% of our athletes now, 100% of our athletes. Parents can opt out, I still believe, can they not, Lisa?
Parents can opt out, yeah.
But very few do.
I don't know that anyone did, honestly.
Right, good. So, very pleased, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. 7.1, well, this seems a little silly, school board recognition.
The Ohio School Board Association is celebrating School Board Recognition Month this month of January of 2014, to build awareness and understanding of the vital function of our elected board officials in our society. School Board Recognition Month honors our board members in Ohio's 719 exempted city and local and joint vocational school districts in the state. Now, Forest Hills School District is joining with the other districts throughout the state to recognize the importance, contribution, school board members make to their communities and to our school district. I just want to say that it's great having a Board of Education like your, like all of you. I know, and maybe our community doesn't, but you all put in a lot of time into this, and it's sometimes a thankless job. So I do have a certificate that I would like to, first of all, read Julie's, which is first, which just simply says, "In sincere appreciation for exemplary leadership and service to the public schools. Presented to Julie Bessinger, Forest Hills School District, School Board Recognition Month, January 2014." Julie?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim? I hope I got these in order for it. You're right. And the little appreciation is a little fruit basket that our administrators got together, and a couple of the little things. So again, thank you all for everything you do.
Thank you.
We all appreciate it. Thank you very much. Now is the time for a couple of comments. I have one green card, are there any more? All right, I've got three. We'll do them in the order that they were given to me, and you're limited to five minutes.
Thank you for fielding my question. As a mom of three young children in the district, I've been gathering my information in regards to your inter-district transfer policy and reading, and I have a few questions for you. I've been busy gathering the facts from people in the district, from your main board office, from administrators and staff in my children's building. I am very well aware that there has been great work by Fallon Research, our faculty and staff and administrators in our buildings. I acknowledge that there are some issues regarding the Fallon Research, such as fire safety and numbers in our buildings, regarding space limitations, and the concern for numbers for optimal learning. However, as I plan for the future with my children in selecting where to live in this district for high school, my question is in regards to the discrepancy of the 2013 performance index rating. For those of you who may not be as familiar, Turpin High School was ranked as number 28 out of thousands of high schools in our state. Anderson High School was ranked 174. My question is in regards to such a discrepancy, and also, looking at other public schools in our state that have multiple high schools, or schools that have been a much closer, close, closely clustered number for that performance index, such as Cleveland and Columbus schools, where maybe one school might have been ranked in the 20s and another in the 30s. And I have gathered my information, being educated that academics is similar in both locations for the high school. We've already heard from Fallon Research about the discrepancies with the structure of the buildings. I commend the teachers and staff for all their excellence in teaching, despite those building limitations, but I was hoping someone could address the discrepancy. Because as I do plan, I, as a taxpayer, would like the best academic environment for my students, and maybe one high school over another may be better for that individual student. And up until this point, I know you have to shore the streets, that maybe are swing streets, I am aware of that. However, there has been that perception that people could potentially request or petition to go to one school over another. So as a parent, I'm hoping that you can help clarify that for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kristy Blankenship.
Hello. First of all, I'd just like to say, you did a great job researching. I'm kind of taking a different stance. I thought the board might appreciate kind of hearing from a mom who's had three daughters who had that choice, and I have. So I've had, I've got three daughters, one graduated from Turpin, our home school is Anderson. We moved to the district over 20 years ago. When we purchased our house 15 years ago, I wasn't even thinking about high school. I was thinking about changing diapers and keeping up. So anyway, I'll tell you what the difference has been, and I looked at research, I looked at numbers, and when my daughter Bailey decided she wanted to go to Turpin, I was floored. I was coaching at Anderson, I was like, you've been at Anderson, she was at Anderson since you were five years old. And it was really for her, just the fit. It just fit better. And I hate to see, as a parent, this board take away that opportunity for future students. That's how I feel. Nagle is a big school. I love Nagle. But you took three kids who are in this small, secure environment of an elementary school, and they only knew those 100 friends, and they knew them like they were best friends. And then you threw them all together in Nagle. It was huge. It was like this big fish pond, and they had to find friends again. And I remember when we looked at Anderson versus Turpin, you couldn't shadow at Turpin, but you could shadow at Anderson. And I took Bailey there. And she said, "I just felt like I was home when I entered Turpin." She said, "I got this feeling like I belonged." And for Nagle, she floundered in finding her friends again. And so, when she remade friends, she, it wasn't about sports, it wasn't about necessarily academics for her, it was where she fit in. So I just really urge this board to give the kids what they need, and that they can find the fit that's best for them. Because I will tell you, she flourished. And so, our second daughter came along, she's chosen Turpin as well. It's been a great fit for her. Our third daughter, she's an eighth grader at Nagle, she's looked at Turpin, in fact, we spoke to Mrs. Johnson on Friday. I even told Mrs. Johnson two years ago, I said, "If this board takes away that option, let me know, because I'll put my house up for sale, if that's what my kids want to do." So it's that important to me. So I just hope that this board recognizes that it's not just about the numbers, it's not about the team sports, it's not always about the academics, it's what's best for the kids. And I just think that we need to keep an open mind about that, so.
Thanks, thank you. Joey Hazelmaker?
That's close, even to you.
Oh, sorry. I should know, I spoke to your.
I didn't spell that right, then we're in bad shape. My topic is about, I have a daughter that's at Nagle that would like to go to Turpin. I have a son who's in seventh grade, he's the same thing. My older children, I've talked to many of you about this, my older children attend to Turpin, my younger children went there, they seemed, you know, they were there, they dreamed of going to Turpin, and now there's an issue with space at Turpin, and so I'm here to talk about, you know, the board doing something about that if they can, to make space available, or to change the policy so that my younger children can attend where they've grown up dreaming about going to that school. And so, you know, I've heard some ideas, some concepts that might fix the problem. And so, I'm kind of here to just kind of make sure that comes up, talk about it, and, you know, and hopefully down the road, the policy will work itself out, so that other families that are choosing between Anderson and Turpin, and the older kids go to that school, the younger children will be able to go as well. So, really, it's a very narrow issue, I think, and I just wanted to voice it.
Thank you. All right, before I get somebody else's name pronounced wrong again, Dorothy, Dorothy, can you help me? Please?
Dorothy O'Neill.
O'Neill, thank you.
I'm actually going to chime in too, on the Turpin-Anderson. I moved to the district in 2010, and we looked at properties both on Turpin and Anderson's side. And our real estate agent said, "Oh, the nice thing with Forest Hills, the tax dollars follow the student." So I actually called the district office and said, "How does it work?" They said, "You fill out a form, but there's no bus transportation." Now, I know this particular year is like kind of a mega-class, they're large. So at the end of 2013, I called the district office and said, "How does it work? How do I get the form?" And they said, "They're updating the form, that I could stop by and pick it up at the end of June." So I did, dropped it off, and I said, "What's the criteria?" They said, "Well, when we received it," they said, "We look at academics, discipline issues, and attendance issues." So I thought this was good, turned in my form, and then the forms got returned, and there's like a different criteria now. And I'm just trying to figure out what the criteria is now. Is it more subjective? Is it no longer based when it came in? Is it more based on what the board sees appropriate? And what, what is the criteria now? If it's not first come, first served, kind of what is the criteria?
Thank you. Thank you. I'm sure we'll talk more about this when the intra-district policy comes up later in the agenda, there will be some board discussion, maybe we'll, hopefully, we'll be able to answer some of those questions that have been posed. Next up on the agenda is updates from the subsequent tenant, Dr. Jackson.
Hey, give me just a second to get my updates. I have a couple of updates for the Board of Education for our district. We're in the process of, actually, culminating this as a district publication that will be sent to all of our resident households of the district, and that publication is going to be a 16-page document to talk about our district and inform our constituents about the great things going on in Forest Hills Schools. That will go out in early February. So just an update there. Another update in regards to this Saturday is our district science fair at Nagle, and that starts at 9:00 AM and goes to approximately 12:00. And it'll be a lot. And it'll be lots and lots of kids and some great projects, and it's really one of the thrills of my year is going and just, the kids are amazing. I have no idea what some of them are talking about, they're just, they're really good and the research that they do is phenomenal. Another piece of information I've been sharing a little bit with the board, I'd like to, again, give an update. City of Cincinnati is the sister city to New Taipei City in Taiwan. And over the past couple of years, we have actually had an opportunity to meet the Taiwanese officials when they come to and share with us all the great things about their city and what they are doing with Cincinnati and some of the different school districts, and which we are a part of, the City of Cincinnati, in regards to that process. And they have invited us to participate in a student exchange that a couple of the other districts have been doing so for a couple of years. And so we are in the process of asking for some applications of some of our high school students to possibly do a student exchange where they will actually go to New Taipei City for about 14 days, and experience with the families of the area, attend school, learn a bit about their culture. I think it'd be a great experience. Now, what's unique about this is that some of, in fact, a nice proportion of the cost of this for the students will be paid for by New Taipei City government. So basically, it's probably half, if not more than half, of the cost will be paid for for our students. So we're in the process of doing that, and hopefully we'll get a few students, and we have, we have several applications, Brad's back there.
At least half a dozen right now.
Half a dozen or more, we just put the information out from both of our high schools, so I think it'll be a great experience. And then something else that we've been working on for quite some time, and I think it's beginning to come to fruition, is we've been looking at maybe expanding our world language offerings, or our foreign languages as we call them. Probably one of the most sought-after foreign languages in the United States is Mandarin Chinese. And it's also a language of which finding qualified instructors to teach Mandarin Chinese is very difficult, as you can imagine. We have been put in contact with a possible grant application, and we have filled out that grant, or we'll be submitting that yet this week, in regards to a possible teacher exchange. We don't necessarily have to exchange our teachers, but we would be getting, unless we go as volunteer, we're looking at two certified licensed teachers to come and visit with us from up to one to three years. And again, what's unique about this grant, which takes place through the College Board, Ohio Department of Education, with assistance from the Chinese Educational Ministry, they would be help supplementing some of the cost of doing this. So I think it would be a unique opportunity for our students if we could get this to kind of fruition. And actually, it's a kind of a quick process, we should know within just a few-week period, maybe by as early as next board meeting that if we qualify for this particular program.
You say one to three years, or?
We've asked for three, if they do that, right. The part of the grant is the sustainability of the program, and our thoughts would be starting it at the middle school program and high schools, both high schools as well. So we're asking for.
Two.
Teachers.
Great.
Thank you. Did I do that right, Brad? Hey, just double check.
Hold on.
Brad's in charge of, he's done a great job in regards to working with these different officials in the grant process, and we've spent a lot of time talking about this. Thank you.
Next up, resolution adopting a calamity day alternative makeup plan. Dr. Jackson?
Okay, let me grab my notes on this, let me go back to the screen here. Again, because of the calamity situation that districts across the state of Ohio have found themselves in, as an example, this year, and it's the last year, by the way, that the state of Ohio is actually offering calamity days, or allowing calamity days, and that's a total of five. And in this case, we have reached our five, as many districts have reached more than that. But also in our school calendar, the calamity days is we do have makeup days that we have scheduled, and primarily, there's a couple coming in the spring, and but most likely would be at the end of the school year, just tacking days on to the end of the school Just a few days ago, it was announced that there was a program that districts who wanted to do something like this were to take advantage of this back in the summer, where they ask you to prepare certain lessons, that if you did get into calamity days, and you wanted to at pasture five, and you use these lessons. Well, that didn't make a lot of sense to me. But with this particular new resolution that's brought back, the state of Ohio is allowing us to apply for up to three, what's called online instructional days. Whereas what I think that this is, could be a possibly a great option, or good option for us to really consider, that our staff would actually provide lessons for students for makeup that would be in conjunction with what's currently going on in the classroom. If you think about, rather than extending it to the end of the school year in June, you're just, yes, you could still extend what's going on in the classroom, but what might be going on in the classroom when all of our assessments and most of the meaty part of what we do happens in the spring. So with that said, there's the resolution that is before you, I'm asking the board to consider this resolution. If passed, we would again use this resolution, we would present it to the state of Ohio, we have the concurrence of our teacher organization, that they would support this, and we would send that, and we would then proceed on trying to make this a possibility of occurring.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I move that we adopt the calamity day alternative makeup plan resolution as shown in the agenda.
Second. Discussion?
So this does not necessarily mean we are going to institute it, it just gives us another option.
Just gives us another option. Let's say that we have more than five calamity days, we could maybe possibly use this for one or two of them, or whatever we might have, and do one of our other options for, it just gives us another option.
Does it, and the statute says that we should have put the plan in by August 1st, and I recognize why we didn't, and I don't think we should have. Does the Ohio Department of Education have the ability to override the statute?
Yes, because the statute is actually, is part of the plan that they've authorized the state of Ohio to do this. In fact, the resolution that you're adopting doesn't have any dates in that, and we've had this approved by legal, and this is the same resolution that, similar resolution as ODE has provided to boards of education in other school districts.
And Governor Kasich, if his proposal is taken up in the legislature, might provide some additional relief in any event. All right, Mr. Depper?
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mr. Hamelgarn?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Board discussion, anything on anyone's mind? I suspect we might talk about the intra-district transfer bet. Anybody care to start?
Do you want us to wait until that comes up, or do you want us to do it now? It's coming up on the.
It's actually under curriculum, for some reason, it's not under board report.
Right, it's under 13 for some reason.
We can discuss it then after the motion, let's find anything else?
I just, I have a question. What happens if we exceed calamity days, even with this plan, what's our next plan?
Makeup.
Add at the end?
Add at the end, or anything earlier?
We have two days scheduled prior to the end of the year that we could use, and then we have days scheduled at the end of the year in June. I have those dates if you'd like to, you have those dates?
Great, thanks. Any other board discussion?
I think it was the Good Friday, President's Day.
Thank you.
Fall of spring break.
There was some issue with the April dates though, wasn't there? Oh, I remember what it was, yes, there was.
The calamity day makeups that we would have available, that the board has approved, would be February 17th, and on February the 17th is actually the President's Day holiday. So, and then the next day would be February, excuse me, would be April the 18th, and April the 18th is a, it's a spring holiday day. And then we have makeup days at the end of the year in June, June 5th, 6th, and 4th.
We'll be off July 4th.
Could maybe have July 4th. So those are the dates that we have options.
Further board discussion? All right, next is the Turpin High School Quiz Team Overnight Field Trip, Ms. Ryan?
I actually have three overnight trips. The first one, item 12.1, is the Turpin High School Quiz Team Trip. The administration at Turpin High School is requesting permission for 16 students, two chaperones, from their academic quiz team, travel to Medina, Ohio, February 21st and 22nd, and that's a Friday and a Saturday of this next month, to compete in the Copley Academic Tournament. The cost is $30 for lodging, and the students will be responsible for their meals and utilizing district transportation for this event. And I should add that there are also funds to assist with the cost for those students who have difficulty meeting that cost. The superintendent is recommending the board approve the overnight field trip by the Turpin High School's quiz team to Medina, Ohio, February 21st and 22nd, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Depper?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mr. Hamelgarn?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Item 12.2 is from Anderson High School. They are asking permission for 50 students and eight chaperones, travel, their drama club, travel to Columbus, Ohio, March 28th through 30th, which is the beginning of our spring break, Friday through Sunday, 2014, to attend the 2014 Ohio State Desbyon Conference. The cost for this trip is $125 per student, this includes the lodging, meals, and registration fees. The students will be utilizing district transportation also for this event. Superintendent is recommending the board approve the overnight field trip by Anderson High School Drama Club to Columbus, Ohio, March 28th through 30th, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
I assume there's money to support.
Yes, there are scholarships actually for this event.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mr. Hamelgarn?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Item 12.3 is another trip by Turpin High School. Their administration is requesting permission for 20 students and two chaperones from Turpin to go to the Ohio Junior Classical League, to travel to Columbus, Ohio, March 7th through 9th, 2014, to compete at the Ohio Junior Classical League St. Competition. The cost per student is $185 for this trip, this includes lodging, meals, registration, and all of that activities, and we will be utilizing district transportation for this event as well. The superintendent is recommending the board approve this trip by the Turpin High School Junior Classical League to Columbus, March 7th through 9th. And I should mention, this is a Friday through a Sunday also, where the students would not be missing school.
Motion? So moved.
Second.
Mr. Depper?
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mr. Hamelgarn?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Next, we have the board policy, second reading of the intra-district transfer. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, in front of the board is the second reading, or the adoption of the intra-district transfer. This particular policy was, has had the policy committee review it and actually design it, help design that program, and that, this policy, that's, or Randy Smith and Julie Bissinger said on that, and district officials, administrators. I would like to, if, would you like to do a motion first, or would you like, I would like Tammy Carnahan just come and give a quick overview of the policy itself?
Randy?
Go ahead.
Well, what we thought we would do, we talked earlier today, maybe, should we do the motion first, do you think, or?
I think procedurally, the motion should come first and then discussion.
And then Randy and I thought that we would start off the discussion, if that's okay.
I think that'd be great.
I know last, because it's a, it's a board committee, and I thought that, we thought that I would do a little bit of the background like I did last time, especially because there are so many folks interested in this policy. And then Randy would complete, and then Tammy, that'd be great, for a team.
And just to be clear, the motion we're about to make is actually just the policy. We don't make the guidelines, that's separate, correct?
Yeah.
So we'll be voting on the intra-district transfer, and I move that the board approve the intra-district transfer policy as presented.
Second.
Discussion.
Okay. For those of you who were here last time, forgive me, because this is repetitive, and it's short, I promise, but we just wanted to give you a little bit of the history of how we got to where we are. Forest Hills has been extremely liberal in permitting transfer from one school to another, and actually, there have been very few guidelines in the past in managing. Our policy was called the intra-district open enrollment policy, and it said, "The board shall permit any eligible student in the district to apply for enrollment in any district program or school, provided the student's application meets the requirements of the state and the conditions established by district guidelines." And the current restrictions primarily have to do with capacity issues in buildings or grade levels, if a student has a history of suspension or expulsions, and a racial imbalance. And frankly, what happened is the numbers got away from us, resulting in certain schools or programs reaching or exceeding capacity. And the issue came to a head for us with the anticipation of next year's freshman class, it's a very large class, and we decided that we needed to do something. So last spring, we began in earnest to look at what we should do. And I know initially Tammy and I had some sort of informal meetings, and then Tammy, Dallas, Randy and I began initial discussions. We spoke with parents and administrators, Tammy gathered and reviewed policies from other districts, and then the policy committee itself took charge of the issue this fall. And for capacity purposes, it was, it was very, I guess, fortuitous that the OFCC report came out around the same time that we were earnestly discussing the policy. So what we did was, we used the OFCC capacity numbers, when we were talking about our policy. And under the OFCC capacity numbers, currently Turpin exceeds capacity, and so we used OFCC for the high schools, and we used elementary class size or program capacity for determining what that should be. Because it's more appropriate in the elementaries for the self-contained or the team classrooms. I hope that makes sense. Since some buildings in the district have little or no ability to accommodate intra-district transfers, other than those that might be required for special needs or otherwise required by law, the policy committee, consisting of Superintendent Dallas Jackson, Treasurer Rick Tepper, HR Director Tammy Carnahan, and board members Randy Smith and myself, we met on November the 15th and December the 3rd, and we recommended the policy that was presented for the first reading at the December 16th meeting. Now, one more thing I want to tell you, and then Randy's going to take over. We also had the proposed policy reviewed by everybody in central office for any input that they had. And since the last meeting, we've had some more discussions, and Randy will share those with you.
Yeah, I just wanted to recap that although the policy was called the open.
Enrollment.
Open enrollment, that was actually a misnomer. There really was not a open enrollment policy in the Forest Hills School District. I know I've heard from some realtors, they've made some interesting statements, which probably helped move houses, but that actually was not accurate. The policy even then was very clear, there are district boundaries for each building, and that was stated in the policy, and the transfer was dependent upon capacity. And as Julie pointed out, we're at the point now where every building in the district, except maybe Anderson, exceeds capacity based on the OFCC numbers. And so, we have to do something. We can't not do something. Clearly, there has been confusion, and what we are trying to do is work through this and minimize confusion, also make it fair, so people understood exactly what was the criteria, and how is this, how, how should it work. Also want to point out that even though you've heard us just say that we're voting on the policy, what we have looked at, and what is the change which may be a solution for some people who are, have a situation with siblings, is, let me just read, it's okay, I'm gonna read the change to the guidelines for how the superintendent and the Director of Curriculum would evaluate the applications that would come in. Let's see, "Students who have been attending a building that is different than the one their residents, run of their residents, due to prior intra-district transfer approval, living on a pick or swing street, or special program placement, or younger siblings of students described above, who will be concurrently enrolled in the same building. However," and this is the key part, "students who are currently," and that means January of 2014, "enrolled in 7th or 8th grade, who have a sibling who previously graduated from a Forest Hill school," meaning Anderson or Turpin, "will be grandfathered to the same high school from which their sibling graduated." That's key language, because if you had a student graduate from one of the high schools, and they are currently in the 7th or 8th grade, they will then have the opportunity to attend that, that school. Dallas, help me out with the rest of the criteria, because it's, it is still, capacity is still an issue. But that is the exception that would be allowed as the applications are being reviewed.
Correct. There is a, in the guidelines itself, there's definitely a priority, but it comes down to basically capacity. And it was our intent, first of all, the board didn't, at any case, even in, when we talked in our committee, did we want to say that there was a student that was attending, let's say, Turpin, and then we're gonna say, oh, see, now the sibling is gonna go to Anderson. We wouldn't let that. So, there's some grandfathering, and that's what Randy was, was sharing. To, to accommodate our current middle school students, who has had a sibling, who has attended one of the two high schools, either Turpin or Anderson, we will grandfather the current 7th and 8th grade students to that particular building if they so apply.
Hold on. Is that right, or is the concurrent enrollment required?
Uh, no, it says, however, the students currently, uh, the concurrent enrollment does not apply for our current, or the changes, that's what we talked about, Jen. Of a sibling, here's an example. Let's say that I had a sibling, my brother graduated a year ago, and I am a 7th or 8th grade student. Then the grandfathering would allow that 7th or 8th grade student, since their sibling had graduated from Turpin in this example, would also be permitted to go to Turpin upon their application. So that's the change, I mean, that, that we had talked about. 7th and 8th grade who, it's not a concurrent. Now, let's take another example, just to go one step further. Let's say that we have a 7th grader who, who is, fits this criteria, and in two years there, and Turpin, we'll say this example again. And then, there's another sibling that comes along, you have more than one child, and let's say that, then that's when the concurrency would come in. Okay? So if that 7th grader's a freshman at Turpin, or sophomore, the next year, and there's another one right behind them, and then they would, again, we're not going to separate that family at that particular time in that building. Okay? Does that make sense? Tammy, is there anything you, you might need to add to that as well? Do you want to talk about the priorities?
Uh, yeah.
Just one second, Tammy. And I, I know there's at least one family that's interested in this in the audience. The 7th or 8th grader doesn't have to be in Forest Hills right now for that to apply. It can be, the child, the child, the child could be like a GA or whatever. Um, yeah.
Right. I apologize, yes, because they would have had a sibling that graduated from one of the Forest Hills high schools.
Right.
But they have to be a current 7th or 8th grader.
But, Tammy, so a 7th or 8th grader who has not had someone at a particular high school, they are, by policy, going to have to attend the school of their geographic location.
Well, they can make application.
They can make application, right.
Right.
And also- They won't be grandfathered.
This is not a policy that is ending intra-district transferring. It is still alive and well with guidelines.
That's correct. We've actually prioritized some of those guidelines, and if the board would like, I'll just very quickly talk about those. First priority would be given to a step-
Ms. Carnahan, would you come up here so that everybody here can hear you? Thank you.
Uh-huh. First priority would be given to a sibling, who is, again, concurrently enrolled. And the second priority would be those who have a childcare provider in a different attendance area. And obviously, this is probably going to apply mostly to our elementary students, but we do have people who apply for intra-district transfer, because grandmother, you know, might live in Eyre, and they live in Mercer, or, you know, so forth. The third priority would be the students of staff members who live in the district. So again, they have to still be Forest Hill students, live in the district, and they want their children to attend the school in which they teach. So again, it has to be in the school they teach. And then, anything after those priorities are satisfied, we would be looking at, considering the rest of the intra-district transfers as they come in, in the order that they are received.
Based on the capacity of the building?
Thank you, yes, based upon capacity. And I believe Julie said this, but you know, for our two high schools, we are looking very strictly at our school facilities, uh, numbers. But for our elementaries, we're actually looking at class size, because it's really difficult, you know, for anyone who knows anything about elementary, it's really hard to, to make that judgment on a building size. It really needs to be by class size. So we're trying to keep our class sizes at a reasonable number. Another thing that I would just say is, you know, just, we, we have done some projections based upon the number of students that we know are currently attending school at Turpin and Anderson. We've looked at our larger class coming in from Nagle. We've looked at the class that's graduating. And we've also looked at those students who are, who we believe will probably want to be grandfathered in as a result of, you know, an older sibling. And Anderson would be at approximately 1,195 students next year. And again, these are projections, which is about 85 less than what the capacity is there. Turpin, on the other hand, with all of those numbers, would be at 1,261, which is 81 above So as you can see, you know, we really do have a capacity issue, you know, there at Turpin, so.
How, how often would this be evaluated, as far as the numbers? Would it always, are the OFCC numbers, because we talked earlier about the OFCC being a little more, um, maybe, maybe liberal with the building size and things like that?
I, I guess I would defer that to the board, because, you know, the actual policy itself would be a board decision. You know, the guidelines would be what we as administrators put together and use to administer the policy, so.
I, I think two things. One, the OFCC is an objective measure. It's, it's, nobody has any skin in the game. The OFCC is an objective measure. Plus, we've been hearing from our principals, we're, we're, we're full. We cannot take any more kids. It affects education, it affects movement through the building, a myriad of things, so...
Yeah, the principles we use as we approach this were, you know, what's right for the district and, and student learning, based on the capacity of the building, and also balance that with some unique situations for, for families, to try and figure out what's the compromise? How do, how do we make this the optimum, given the situation we're in? As I said earlier, I think everybody is aware, we've got a enrollment bubble that's moving through, and to do nothing is not an option. And that's one of the reasons we changed the name of the policy, I should say corrected it, because there was a misnomer. I mean, if you hear "open enrollment policy," you think that there is open enrollment, and there actually never really was. It was just mislabeled. And so, that's why it's all kind of come to a head here, and that's why we took the time to reevaluate, reevaluate the policy, be very clear on what the criteria are, and make people, help people understand, you know, here's, here's what the opportunities are. Because I know, I've, I've heard from parents in years past, some stress on their middle school child, because they had to make the decision on which high school to go to, and I said, "I didn't understand that, because we, we have districts for each high school." The option is not there unless there are some unusual circumstances. So, hopefully, by going through this process and reworking not only the policy, but also the guidelines, it will clarify and help people understand, here's what the situation is. Again, keeping in mind, we've got to do the right thing for the district from an enrollment and a learning standpoint.
Randy and Julie and Dallas, just to, one thing that, underlying the whole process was, is that we believe that both high schools have identical educational opportunities, and that learning occurs at the highest of levels, whether it's on Forest or on Bartles. So, I-
And I can't address the, the first speaker, I mean, not to go into a lot of detail, but the percentage points in PI between the two, just the two, our two high schools are very minimal. That literally could be as many as one or two students, I, in regards to that. They, they, both of our high schools, as far as PI index, are some of the top in the state of the thousands of high schools that we have in the state. And again, equality of programs, phenomenal staff, great programs in both buildings. And I can, I can understand that your thoughts of, of, I mean, I hear the, I hear, and I listen to the parents, but we get equality of programs. It's not like we have a, have a half not, it's, we have two quality.
Now, the people I spoke with and heard from, I think this change in the guidelines will, is a solution for-
Some of them.
Some of them, maybe not all, but I, the ones I spoke with.
Well, I spoke to a lot. Some of them are here tonight, and some of them aren't. I got a lot of emails. There were a lot of discussions. And at the end of the day, I have to agree, it's, it's all about creating the best learning environment for all of our students throughout the district. We're over capacity at some of the buildings. Doing nothing is not an option. And this policy allows us to have the best learning environment for the kids in all of the buildings.
One thing I've asked the superintendent to do, after we got through this process, is to send a letter to every realty office in, anywhere near the Forest Hill School District, so that they are very clear on what, exactly what our policy is. But we'll get to that later.
And speaking of that, for those of you who are in the audience, there will be a link on our website tomorrow with the district policy, the administrative guidelines, which, you know, really is the administration of the policy, as well as the form. So just go to the district website, and there will be a link, I, I think it should actually say intra-district or something, and you should be able to very easily find that, so...
I also make a suggestion, and we talked about it last time, is, we talked about district boundaries and what school, what bill, or houses go to what school. And I had a Realtor ask me about the, the new development going off of Clough, or for that matter, I mean, maybe down the line, the Coldstream Megaplex that they're talking about. Is that, is that available, or maybe we could make that available as it stands now, obviously subject to, to, to district, redistricting or what have you, but...
We, we do not have an updated map at this point. We are trying, going to try to work with the township to get that. But we would have a street guide that is on the district website, and if you had any questions about where you lived, especially those people who used to live on, or, or lived on what we used to call pick or swing streets, that information, you know, all of those will be available, so people will know exactly what building that, you know, they're in, whether that's an elementary decision or, or a high school.
Some of you may know this, many, some may not, but we're renting trailers at two buildings right now to deal with our overcapacity. So this is not an imagined situation. I mean, it's, it's, we're, we're over capacity.
Right, certainly. We couldn't allow a situation to occur that would have us running trailers at Turpin next year.
Historically, what happened was, when Nagle Middle School was built, I don't know if many people know, but all the 7th and 8th graders, 7th and 8th graders on the Turpin side were all in Turpin's building, 7th and 8th graders for Anderson were all in Anderson's building. So you had those two classes of kids in those very same buildings. And the school system, the transfer policy, inter-district transfer policy was a little more stringent, because they could always use the overcrowded issue. And then Nagle opened up, and now all of a sudden, the overcrowded issue was gone. You couldn't use that as an issue anymore. So I think that's why it became more lax, and why people started calling it open enrollment, unless things were challenged. One of the positives, I think, is, you know, society-wise, we're going more towards choice in every different way. We have kids in all different school systems that live right here in Anderson Township. We've got different restaurants to pick from, and different dry cleaners to go to, and different sports leagues to play in, and I think it's, uh, choice makes people better. So it's great that we have two outstanding high schools in our district that we have to choose from. Having said all that, though, and listening to everybody, and respecting the good work that the committee did, if you walk into some of these schools, it's, we're, we've done the 360. We're back to where we're at a capacity. Things have grown, and some changes have been made, and it's probably something we're gonna have to do.
I, I agree with Tony that, I think Nagle, I think Nagle and everybody being in one building like that made it a lot more of an open enrollment, uh, kind of atti, mental attitude with people. You know, what school do I choose?
Excuse me, before you vote, is there a way to ask a question? I've never been to one of these meetings. It would seem immediately that it's a time to be discussing, it's a time to ask the question, not 45 minutes before we discuss it.
The answer is no. This isn't the forum in which to answer questions, and it's not that we don't care to answer your questions. It's that, this isn't a public meeting. If we begin taking questions from the audience, we won't be able to conduct the, the business of the school board. It is the reason why we give people the opportunity to fill out the green cards and addresses at the appropriate time in the meeting. I really, it pains me to say, "No, I don't want to hear your question," but it's not the appropriate forum or time for a question.
Can we ask for a clarification on the policy, only because Mr. Smith had stated that everyone, that the policy changes addressed everyone that he spoke with. And I spoke specifically with him about pick, swing streets. I'm just concerned about-
Let, let me address that without actually answering your question. I know every member of this board cares very deeply about every student in this district. We, we are fortunate to have members of this board that care nothing about what's best for the community, as opposed to some other districts that, you know, have people on there that, that frankly, I think are looking more at disassembling public education. That's not the case in this district, and hopefully, it never will be. We have all talked, and I, I know, we have all talked to lots of people. Some of the people in this room, and a lot of people that couldn't make it this evening. I have had calls, two, three, four, five, every day for the last month since the last meeting, and email after email. And I know other members of this board have been equally called. So we, we've had lots of questions, and we've taken them all very seriously, and we have considered this. And at least I know, I've stayed up night worrying about how is the decision that we're about to make going to affect this family, and this family, and that family. And at the end of the day, while your question is certainly important, the better question that we as the board have to address is what's best for the community and the district as a whole, not one particular family, although we care about each and every family in the district. That's not a direct answer to your question, but it's how we got to where we are now. Any further discussion?
Well, I'll say that my, to echo what was said here, and I, I got a lot of phone calls and, and emails, as, as I should, and as we should. I mean, that's, that's our, why we're here. My concern is, is for- My concern is, is for the eighth graders who don't have siblings, who are six months away and from, from going to high school. And to a lesser extent, the seventh graders, and then, I mean, it goes down. And a lot of the discussions I've had, the parents that I've talked to, I mean, they understand, I mean, the numbers, our projections, but I'm assuming that they're relatively solid projections. And being plus eighty-one, I mean, that's a whole wing of Turpin. Is, and I guess I got the answer from where the priorities come. I would like to see another rung on the ladder where you have the priorities of the people. Personally, I think that the open enrollment was, was not a well-thought-out plan originally. And we're having to, and we're paying the price for it now. So now we're in a spot where, I mean, we've had it with some of the schools, we have, you know, we have, again, the wonderful trailers at two of our elementaries. And because we're overcrowded. And now we have a high school that's overcrowded. I mean, a lot of violence gone on north of Clough and that's, and that's what we're seeing now. Is that potentially, and where it may not, and it may be just procedural, but to have another layer of eighth grade, seventh grade and swing street as, understanding that as we go through, at some point you reach capacity and you have to say no more, you can't do that. But is to have maybe a, some priority for those who, as we transition to a firmer structure, to have some priority, even if it turns out that, you know, the buildings are full.
Yeah, but as a practical matter, they are full. They're already over capacity in giving them priority. And being first on the priority list may not be enough.
Understood.
And one other thing that I'd just like to say is, you know, if the board would not have taken this step, if they would have never looked at interdistrict policy, our current policy just says that once a building reaches capacity, you know, we can say no. In the middle of August, this past summer, we actually said at Turpin, no, we're full. You know, and we stopped taking additional students. And, you know, it was only a handful, people who had very late applications. So it, I, with this, I think we're actually taking more students than we may have with the old policy, just simply because of the grandfathering in. If you just take out those students who are grandfathering, we're still at approximately twelve thirty at Turpin.
And when we started this discussion, we were already overcapacity at Turpin.
Yes.
And I'm looking back on notes that were from a long time ago, back in November, so.
Just for clarity on the pick or swing streets, if there's a sibling, they're covered under the guidelines. If there is not a sibling, they're not?
That is correct.
The pick streets have always been an Anderson district street, always from day one. There was never really a choice between the two, but it was a, always determined that those streets, if you look at any of our documentation, were Anderson good, were Anderson streets.
And part of the reason that happened, I think, although I don't think, we look for the historical background, but I think for those of us who had kids at Sherwood, Sherwood is one of the only elementaries that really kind of splits Anderson and Turpin, like naturally. You know, I live off Salem and we're, we're a pick street because we went to Sherwood, I think. And there's a whole cluster down there. But we are geographically Anderson. Does that make sense? And, you know, it's, it's probably been about over the years, in my experience, about fifty-fifty. You know, fifty percent Turpin, fifty percent Anderson.
Anyone else?
I filled out a card. Mike still asked a question, maybe he's not. It's, you know, I filled out the form the district had. I met the criteria the district had at the time. Now, it appears there's a special interest group that's kind of, I think the one gentleman mentioned, people that have been, he's kind of satisfied, the people that he's got to know something about the siblings, but-
No, no, that's-
The other taxpayers, why couldn't it be, you filled it out for-
Ma'am, ma'am, it's not a public meeting. I apologize.
I know, I filled out the card and asked a question.
We can't, we can't do this. We can't do it. You did fill out a card and you had your opportunity to speak. I apologize. I don't mean to be rude. We just have to control the meeting. Any further discussion? Mr. Tapper?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mr. Hamelgarn?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Human Resources Report.
I think I'll just stay up here then. If you would please, take a look at your Human Resources Report. Item A, Retirement. Mike Bond, thirty-five years teaching in Forest Hills School District as a math teacher in Nagel. He will be, he will be retiring at the end of this school year. So we'll, we'll see him again. Item B, Resignation of Coaches. Item C, We Have a Leave of Absence for the Next School Year. Salary Schedule. And you, item D, you had already seen that salary schedule, but there was a minor tweak that we made and I wanted to make sure that you approved it as exhibited. Item F would be our Appointments. And please note, these are probationary, probationary employment based upon our master contracts of both of our OPSY groups. Item G, Special Services Appointments. And you see a number of athletic events here, as well as some academics with some time work beyond the contract, as well as the addition of an instructional consultant who will be providing some work for us in curriculum. Going on to page three, we have our Destination Imagination Coordinators. And I might add that those are funded by the Forest Hills Foundation for Education. And you see those folks there. And the Anderson High School Drama Production. Item H, All of These Are Coaches or Advisors for Our Various Buildings. Item I, Substitute Personnel. Item J, This is Removing Substitute Personnel From Our District. And please note that since our December meeting, we actually had one student who, due to, a new student, due to this, his attendance or her attendance, it increased her bus route point oh one. So our FTE is now seven sixty-nine point eight three. And the superintendent recommends that the board approve the HR report as reported.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Tapper?
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mr. Hamelgarn?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Business Operations, Mr. Johnson? Payment in lieu of Transportation?
I was stunned to see so many people walked out and didn't want to hear this, this item. As, as we do every year, we're bringing a payment in lieu of transportation resolution. We've had, received a, an application from a new student who got in before the deadline, as well as, instead of waiting until April, we were able to find that they, the state again has increased the amount. So we revised the amount as well. So the resolution for payment in lieu of transportation is attached. The treasurer recommends the board adopt the payment in lieu of transportation resolution as presented.
Motion?
So moved.
Second. I'm sorry, Tony.
Mr. Tapper?
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mr. Hamelgarn?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Just to be clear, I like bringing this up because I found it interesting the first time I heard. We, the payment in lieu of transportation, everyone who goes to that school has to agree to, to do that. And then, and then the district does pay those families two hundred and fifty dollars per child.
Correct. They attend that school just a portion of the year that's provided based upon the amount of time they attend that school.
I just like, my neighbor was surprised. He was trying to get all of his IHM friends to.
I think it's, a lot of people don't realize that the public property tax goes for all students regardless of whether in public or private schools. So a lot of people don't realize that some of our money, it's not all going just for the public school. So there, and I know you know that, but, but I think a lot of people are surprised by the fact that, and there's, there are other things where we're using our budget to cover all students in the district.
Thank you. Treasurers, oh no, skipped one. Annual Membership dues to the Ohio School Boards Association. Mr. Tapper?
Yes. We're requesting to renew the annual membership for the calendar year 2014 with the Ohio School Board Association. The membership fees have not changed since last year. That fee is seven thousand two ninety-six. This membership entitles to a lot of services that many of us, including the Board of Education, take advantage of, including legal assistance, labor relations, lots of different professional development, school board services such as strategic planning, workshops, a lot of comparative analysis throughout various operational areas that we want to compare ourselves to best practices. They also vet a lot of vendors and have a, a list of vendors that, that we know are tried and true and that are actually very school-friendly to our business. So we, we value this partnership. I mean, there's in fact entire services catalog, but since nineteen fifty-five, I think we've been members since the beginning. And so we recommend the board approve the renewal of the annual membership, the Ohio School Boards Association, for the amount of two thousand, seven thousand two ninety-six.
Motion?
So moved. Second.
I have discussion.
Yeah. I have to abstain because I am a trustee for the Ohio School Board Association, so legally I'm not allowed to vote on this, but I want to make it clear, I'm very supportive. And also want to point out that by taking advantage of some of the benefits of being a member of that organization, it's a net savings for the district. I mean, there's also things like the discount we get on board docs. I'm not sure about the, what's the-
Workers' comp.
Workers' comp. There are a number of things. So it's a, it's a, it's a net savings for the, the school district. So, but like I said, I have to abstain.
Well, I asked Mr. Tapper to, to go through the benefits of belonging to that organization because there was a district lately that was considering not paying their fee and joining the organization. And that person was not listened to and they did it. And I can tell you, I, I very frequently call the Ohio School Boards Association and they've, I'm an attorney, but they've got school law attorneys and they really know what they're doing. And it's been wonderful guidance and they've helped us on a lot of different issues and it's, it's well worth the money that we pay for that membership. Any other discussion?
It's kind of an obscure number, that seven thousand two hundred and ninety-six.
Based on enrollment.
Okay.
And it seems like there's some other factor in there.
Okay.
Mr. Tapper?
Mr. Hamelgarn?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Abstain.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
And the treasurer's report?
Item A, we have the donations for December. Big item this, this month is the furniture from the Nagel Middle School PTA, over thirty-six thousand dollars. So we value all of our partners, but this month, we really value them. The, in item B, we have a statement of board accounts. Fund five sixteen has a negative balance. We're actually waiting for some money to come in, but the, the criteria for that has been met. Item C is our general fund receipts, almost fifty percent. We're at the fifth, at the halfway point, so that's a good thing. Forty-nine point eight six of our projected revenue. D and E show our expenditure patterns for this year. Those are in line with where we've been at this time previously. Monthly bank reconciliation F, investments G, no amendments to the appropriations this month. Item, we have our Board Service Fund. We're requesting approval of Board Service Fund expenses. And lastly, we're establishing a new Student Activity Fund at Anderson High School. It's recommended the board approve the treasurer's report as presented.
So moved.
Second.
I'd like to point out once again, our investment report, one point five million dollars investment has a total interest of twenty-eight dollars and forty-two cents.
Not a lot.
Let's fix the roof. Mr. Tapper?
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mr. Hamelgarn?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Reports to the Board of Education, there's the Business Advisory Committee Report. Mr. Tapper?
Do not have a meeting between our last meeting. Our next meeting is the third of February, seven o'clock. We plan to talk about a lot of comparative analysis that we have, obviously some facility discussions that we have, as well as the communications publication that the district's working on. So lots of good topics. Welcome to, join us.
Thank you. Next is the Forest Hills Foundation for Education Report. I will provide that report. They're running a number of programs, the first of which is they have the ACT, ACT Preparation Class. There'll be another class in March. If you're interested, I assume, contact the foundation, D. Stone. Destination Imagination, teams are meeting now and the regional competition will be on March eighth at Nagel. After-school tutoring continues at Nagel every Tuesday and Thursday. There's about forty to fifty kids per session, so it's, it's very well-attended. And thank you very much to the foundation for continuing to sponsor that. February twenty-second at Nagel is a date for today's woman. Registration's open on the foundation website or you can pick up forms at the district office. I've never been, but I've heard. The Alumni Basketball Game is Saturday, March first at Anderson. If you're interested in blowing out your knee and providing some work for Dr. Heiss, go ahead and sign up for that. And for the first time, they're going to have female players. I don't know why that's the first time. At halftime, they're gonna, if, if you're gonna, interested, just contact, let's see, the foundation for that. And then Frank Brandy will be honored for his twentieth year as career at the head coach at Anderson Basketball. The Forest Hills Five K is Saturday, May tenth. They're all practicing now in this cold, I'm sure. And the annual campaign continues. I guess it was in earnest at the end of the year, but there's a second phase that's beginning in February. That's the update. Next Legislative Liaison Report. Mr. Smith?
Can you pass that out? There are a number of things that have been addressed by the House and Senate Education Committee, but I think the most significant of them is House Bill one ninety-three. There, they passed before the Christmas break, the House Committee adopted twenty-seven amendments to the House Bill one ninety-three. Some of the key things in that bill were delaying online assessments until 2015, sixteen, delaying the phase out of the OGT. And so there are some other things that are in the House Committee bill that have not been acted on yet, but those are things that will impact us. I gave you the whole list because there's some interesting things in there, but like I said, those are the two key things that I think would impact us. Les, Dallas, or Rick, you've got anything you want to add? That's, that's what's going on.
Thank you. Saga Report. Ms. Bissinger?
Yes. I went for the board on January the fourteenth and it was, attendance was a little down, I think, because it was cold. And let's see, there's a new coalition in, for substance abuse, to combat substance abuse in Merrymont Terrace Park called the Warrior Coalition. On February the eighteenth, data will be back from the Pride Student Survey. It basically talks about students' attitudes and usage toward alcohol and drugs. The data will be forwarded to the consultant for evaluation and he will attend the March eleventh meeting to report. Parent Survey was on, they said at the time would be online this week, which was a week ago. And I got mine and I hope you all got yours. And it only takes a little bit, I'm not sure if they survey, it comes by email. I'm not sure if all parents are surveyed or just certain, a certain segment, certain, a certain amount. But it takes, it's very quick. It probably took me three minutes to fill out. Next week, I'm sorry, next meeting, the Ohio Investigative Unit is having a speaker come and his name is John Burton. And he will talk about retailers ensuring there's no sales to minors. I assume that that's alcohol-related. What else? They are working on the March twenty-fifth, two thousand fourteen High School Youth Summit. It's, it's basically dedicated to listening to what students have to say about usage in Anderson Township. Forty students are chosen per school. It's random, ten students for each grade. They're talking about changing the emphasis a little bit such that students will walk away with some message to take back to the schools. And the very last thing is that they are so glad to have us attending and they thanked us for coming. So whoever's going in March.
I didn't say that when I was there.
Yeah. Whoever's going in March, have fun. Yeah, whoever's going in March, have fun.
Thank you.
Sure.
Executive Session?
Oh, that's me. I move that we go into executive session for the Appointment, Employment, Dismissal, Discipline, Promotion, Demotion, or Compensation of Public Employee, or Official, or the Investigation of Charges or Complaints Against a Public Employee, Official, Licensee, Regulated Individual or Student, unless the Employee, Official, Licensee, Regulated Individual or Student requests a public hearing. Is that the only reason?
Also, Item 5.
Thank you. And Discuss Matters Required to Be Kept Confidential by Federal Law, Federal Rules, or State Statutes.
Second.
Mr. Tapper?
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mr. Hamelgarn?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes. We don't expect to have any business after executive session. Our next meeting is actually the work session I referenced earlier on February 8th, Saturday morning at 8:00 a.m., and the next regularly scheduled board meeting is February 24th at 7:00 p.m. Thank you all.